For your patience, as you know, we've had ongoing technical issues. We spoke about it last night. We are up and running now. So at 5:40 PM, I'd like to call our special legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green? Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Present. Thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Davis, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Jones. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, President Hill. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reflect on the life of Dolores P. Lawson Ford today. Dolores Patricia Lawson Ford was born in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, on August 21st, 1945. Dolores was a lovely daughter of the late Herman Lawson, Sr., and Blanche Jeffries Lawson. She lived an eventful life until she went home to be with the Lord on December 2nd, 2025. Her loving spirit will be greatly missed by her entire family and countless others who loved her dearly. Dolores received her formal education and graduated from John Harris High School in 1965, and had nursing training. Dolores worked for the federal government in Washington DC and Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. She lived her life with a joyful heart. She accepted Christ as her Savior and faithfully trusted God concerning the cares of her daily life. She traveled extensively throughout the United States into other places around the world. Some of her favorite destinations were the Caribbean Islands, South America, and Africa. Even in her last days, you could find her shopping and planning other trips. Dolores was preceded in death by her beloved siblings, Lula Lawson and Larry E. Lawson, Sr. She is survived by her devoted brothers, Dr. Herman Lawson, Jr., Judy, Robert Lawson, Sr., Margie, her loving sisters Gloria Bright, Shirley Lawson, and Elma Jean Scott, and a whole host of caring friends, nieces, nephews, cousins, and extended family members who will forever cherish and honor her memory. I would also like to take a moment of silence to remember the families who were affected by fires over the last week here in the city of Harrisburg. And let's hold that moment, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. Councilman Jones?
Please rise.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. We do not have any communications this evening. We will now open the floor to courtesy of the floor. Please note, there are a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale has added a timer to the screen for your reference, and I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, Councilmembers.
Good evening.
My name is Tyrone Smith.
Excuse me, do you mind holding the microphone closer to you or moving it to the base?
My voice is deep, and I don't want to overburden you.
You're fine, thank you.
My name is Tyrone Smith. I live at 2017 Swatner Street, Harrisburg, PA. I'm here on behalf of Ask Me, the Union Company. What I'm asking for is, I understand that everybody works hard for the city, and we're here waiting for the city. Everybody deserves a raise. All I'm asking is to take in consideration the proposal we proposed to the committee, and just, please, just give a little dignity and respect. Just look at it sincerely, because I love my city. I work hard for my city. My guys work hard for the city. All we're asking is, please, just take in consideration. We're not asking much. Excuse me?
I said, "We're not."
So, and I get it. I know financially, it's a big thing, but we work hard for the city, and we make the city look really good, all of us. That's all I'm asking. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, Council. My name is Brian Keesling. I live in Midtown. To cut to the chase, a few hours ago, the city of Harrisburg posted across its social media that Mayor Williams met today with the Deputy Consul General of the State of Israel here in Harrisburg. To put it bluntly, this is the equivalent of meeting with a diplomat from Nazi Germany in 1944. As this council is aware, last year, the mayor put her thumb on the scale behind the scenes to kill a ceasefire resolution. So her support for the ongoing genocide of the Palestinian people is not a surprise. However, it is still an outrage to host this war criminal here in our city. But beyond the moral outrage, it is also a public safety issue. It should alarm every resident of this city that Commissioner Carter and Deputy Police Chief Young were at this meeting, and that this post talked about a partnership with the government of Israel. She used the word partnership. Many of you may be aware that the Deadly Exchange is the program where Israel and the United States send police to each other's countries for training. American police go there and learn brutal tactics that are inflicted on Palestinians. They bring them home here and inflict those tactics on Americans disproportionately black members of our community. So we need full transparency from the mayor's office about what they discussed at this meeting, whether the partnership involves the Harrisburg Police Department that they're alluding to, whether or not this Deadly Exchange is going to come to Harrisburg, whether it's going to involve surveillance technology, whether it's going to involve tactics that inflict violence on our community. We need Mayor Williams to apologize for hosting a war criminal in our city, and we need her to work to repair the harm that has been consistently inflicted on members of the community on this particular issue. I also ask that the city council call for the mayor to do those things, and that this council publicly disavow inviting a war criminal into our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Okay. Seeing, hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have ordinances for first reading. We have one ordinance, Bill 15 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill 15, 2025, in ordinance amending Chapter 2-701, Compensation of Elected Officials of Title II Administrative Code, to adjust the compensation of elected officials of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Bill 15 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. We do not have any ordinances for amendment or ordinances for final passage. We have one resolution, Resolution 92 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 92, 2025, a resolution approving, adopting, and placing into immediate effect the Dolphin County 2025 Emergency Operations Plan as the official emergency operations plan of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution 92 of 2025 will move to the Public Safety Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business? Seeing and hearing none, the time is 5:50 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn our special legislative session.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
A second, then.
Thank you. We stand adjourned. We will move to our work session. The time is 5:50 PM. I would like to call our work session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Present. We will begin our committee business this evening with the work of the Administration Committee. We have one bill and two resolutions for discussion. We will begin with Bill 15 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill 15, 2025, in ordinance amending Chapter 2-701, Compensation of Elected Officials of Title II Administrative Code, to adjust the compensation of the elected officials of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Whom from the administration is present to discuss Bill 15 of 2025?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want me to just get started?
Sure, you're welcome to get started.
Okay.
If you could please provide an overview of Bill 15 of 2025.
Yes, this was put forth by the mayor. This affects all elected officials within the city of Harrisburg, including council, the mayor herself, the county, and the city comptroller, and also the city treasurer. What it does is that, the last time any kind of raise was done, I believe it was in 2005, and so the current pay has been set for about 20, about 20 years. So it's a, amounts to 25% total increase, but if you look at it from an annual perspective, it amounts to about 1.1%. And if you look at it also from a perspective from other third-class cities, Harrisburg is one of the lower-paid municipalities or cities within Pennsylvania. And I have a spreadsheet to demonstrate that. The raises themselves would be $5,000 for city council members, and it would affect in your next term, and four of you have your next term starting in January. The county comptroller, her term starts in January also, so it would affect her. The city treasurer would be, would be two years from now when that term expires and a new person or the same person gets reelected, and it would affect the mayor in January because she was up for election this year. So that's how that would work. Just to give an example, just some of the other places that we checked and did a comparison. Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, third-class city, their current salary in 2026 is going to be $98,000. Allentown, Pennsylvania, their 2025 salary was $95,000. Easton, Pennsylvania, 2025 salary was $104,996. Lancaster City, 2026 salary was $105,539. Reading, Pennsylvania, their salary for 2024 was $90,750. Erie, Pennsylvania, their salary is $95,000, and Lebanon, Pennsylvania, which is actually smaller than us, was $86,270. So you can see where, you know, all those communities are all higher than Harrisburg itself, so. So it's your pay. You can, you guys do what you want, but it just gives you an idea of what we looked at when we made a determination of offering an increase.
Okay, thank you. Just for everyone's reference, the last adjustment was made by the passage of Ordinance Number 5 of 2025 and Ordinance Number 6 of 2025. I'm just reading the bill. "The Third Class City Code requires that any adjustment to the compensation of elected officials may only take effect at the start of a new term of office. The mayor and council of the city of Harrisburg desires to change the salaries of elected officials of the city of Harrisburg compensating," or excuse me, "commencing the next term of each office." I would like to note that, as Mr. Sokowski mentioned in our interim business administrator, this was the mayor's interest. My question, I don't think this is one that you can answer. I think this is more suited for Solicitor Grover. What prompted Mayor Williams to request a $20,000 raise prior to beginning her second term in office?
I think it has been discussed frankly in this chamber and in the mayor's office for years. And I try to be candid with my assessment of things. I've understood various council members over the years have made the inquiry, various elected officials over the years have made the inquiry, and basically it was just picking a number. It wasn't, there wasn't a magic kind of formula to it. It is frankly more, we recognize the political difficulty for elected officials voting for raises. It's a difficult thing. And, and for the mayor to introduce it, it would be another four years, because the mayor is the one who tends to introduce these. And, you know, 20 years had gone by. Before that, it had been a six-year window between raises. Before that, it had been a 13-year window between raises. So, and the last active thing that happened regarding an ordinance on compensation to an elected official was under receivership, which stripped the mayor's office out of the police pension plan. That was voted on in December of 2013. That was the last vote on anything related to compensation for elected officials. State law makes clear that you can't change compensation in the middle of a term. You know, that's not just here, that's pretty much everywhere. So it's got to be done on a basis where it starts. Some of the more strict things have a different timetable than the city's under, where it's this advance of advertising ahead of certain points in an election cycle. That has not been the interpretation of the optional Third Class City Code or the City Code for the entire 50 years that we've been under it. So we've had two December votes as part of the budget process in order to change things related to compensation. We've had an April vote at one point in the past. So the, but it is plainly within the sound discretion of the council if they think that is appropriate. You know, our office, when asked, has always advised it should be a proposal for all elected officials, if it's going to be a proposal at all. That would seem the fair thing to do, and not pick one or two offices and do one or two offices. So I'm not sure that answers your question, but there is not a magic, "Let's pick this number."
No, you answered the question. It was mainly, I was trying to gain clarity on timing. That was my, the root of the question.
This is the third time I've drafted that piece of legislation since 2014. The requests have come before, no one had the final decision to bring it forth and put it on an agenda.
Interesting. Okay. I don't think I have any other questions at this point, not that you would be able to answer. So I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues who may have some additional questions. I'd like to begin to my left with Councilman Jones. Any questions?
Yes, thank you, President Hill. I really don't have any questions, but I just want to put on the record that I will not be supporting this resolution or this bill. Reason being, I spoke to this yesterday, though I respect my colleagues, I respect the work that you guys do, I respect the administration and the work. However, I just, I have a problem with our process. Our process is flawed. The way that we do conduct business in city government with other entities that come into the city, I believe it's flawed. We write laws that are not being followed by us, and for that, I don't think that I can support this bill. Again, this is not personal towards anyone. This is just where I stand with this. I look at the city of Harrisburg and the conditions today. I'm also concerned with the sustainability of these raises, knowing that we're a distressed city at this moment. Though our budgets may look balanced and all of that, honestly, I just don't see how we can sustain. If someone maybe can explain that to me, how we can sustain this. But there's no way that I can support this bill until we correct our process, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions related to Bill 15?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Sokowski, for joining us this evening. No, no real questions. I've actually sat with Mr. Sam, and we've had discussions, as well as the mayor's office, and I do understand the sentiments of Councilman Jones's and a lot of other, as far as our residents and people in the city's concerns. But I just want to remind that, you know, especially with this body of council, we've legislated through some of the hardest times that our city's seen, COVID. I remember sitting in this very chamber with masks on, where our lives were at risk at one point, government shutdowns. And we do have families as well, and although we get paid for a part-time position, I just want to remind all that our phones do not stop ringing. Our phones are full-time and it's on go, usually around the clock. So I do want to be sensitive and realize it may not be sustainable, but once again, these are questions I may not be able to ask. But I do understand how we would try to, you know, get this legislation passed, and to Grover, Solicitor Grover's point, I do, and I am aware that this has been attempted quite a few times. It just never got the legs to actually be passed and go through. So those are my only sentiments to it, but I do understand, I overstand, a lot of our residents' concerns with 20%. It is extreme, or it can be looked at, but I've always looked at why a lot of our directors are making more than the mayor. I just never saw a sense with that. And same thing with council. It's just, it's a position where you really can't put a price on it, and I just hope and pray that the residents feel it would be fair with the numbers that's in front of us this evening. So those are just my only sentiments with it, but I do understand the sensitivity with it and how it could be looked at either way. So thank you all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions related to Bill 15?
Yes, thank you, President Hill. I was wondering, Mr. Sokowski, I heard you give the competitive wages of other mayors in different third-class cities. I was wondering if you had information for the comptroller, treasurer, or their council members?
I do, actually. Would, you want all of them?
I would, yes, so the public can hear as well, because I think that's also important to see what the competitive wages are in the other third-class cities, not just what the mayors are.
We'll just go with comptroller. Allentown's salary was, but you also have to understand, some of these controllers and treasurers are maybe full-time positions.
Well, you can note that. You can say, ours is...
Well, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head whether they are or not, so.
Oh, so.
We just ran the numbers.
Well, just give me what you got.
So I'll give you the salary for comptroller. So Allentown is $75,998. Bethlehem is $49,000. Chester is $50,000. Easton is $22,389. Erie is $38,000. Lancaster is $8,500. Wilkes-Barre is $60,699. Williamsport is $46,038. York is $20,000. So that's all the controllers. Treasurers, I have four or five. Bethlehem, the treasurer is $2,200. Erie is $48,000. Lancaster is $8,500. Williamsport is $25,625, and York is $50,000. City council, Allentown, $15,000. Altoona, $5,000. Bethlehem, $10,00650. Chester is $52,500. That explains why they're in financial difficulties, but.
What was theirs again?
$52,500.
And that was Chester?
Chester.
Because you didn't name them for mayors. I think you named different ones for mayors and different ones for council, treasurer, and comptroller.
Well, some of them are overlapping, and some of them are not.
Okay.
Let's see. Easton was $93,71.
For council?
For council. All the remaining ones are all for council. Erie was $12,000. Hazleton was $3,850. Lancaster was $8,000. Lebanon was $2,0726. Reading was $6,25008, and Wilkes-Barre was $13,199. Williamsport was $3,000, and York was $10,000.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you be able to email us that information too?
Sure.
Thank you.
We also have averages and all that kind of stuff on here, too.
I would love that sheet. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions on Bill 15?
Thank you, President Hill. Not many questions. Can you hear me? All right. Not many questions. I guess, just kind of looking at overarching, we're talking about a total increase of, between council and the mayor, of $55,000, and if you add in treasurer and comptroller, about $65,000 per year?
But that would be over a multiple-year period of time, because I think the first year would be four or five, 25, $45,000. Then the remaining three members, $20,000 would be in 19, or 2028. So that wouldn't all occur all in one shot.
Okay. Thank you. I guess just kind of looking at it from an overarching standpoint. I'm trying, no, I'm just trying to think of how to say it. There, for our elected officials, do put a lot of time and a lot of effort into it, and there, there has been conversations about this for multiple years. I remember sitting up here from pretty much the time I started council until now, and the conversation constantly goes around of, you know, it's been over 10 years, 15 years, 20 years since there's been any increase to the elected officials' salaries. So it's not like this is a new conversation. I guess this is the first time that it's really been brought down. But then I kind of look at so many positions that go unfilled for so long throughout the year, and how much our budget is underspent in so many lines throughout the year, that when you kind of put it in perspective like that, we do know these positions are working throughout the year. So in, in that effort, I would say, you know, just kind of think about everything in the entire picture and our entire budget, and kind of look at some of the other ways that, that we should be making sure we're being fiscally responsible with our money. So that's kind of just my thought right there, and I guess the conversation continues, so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions on Bill 15?
Thank you, President Hill. No, I would just like to see the information that you have, Mr. Sokowski, and then take a look overall of what's going on with, you know, the finances, the unfilled positions, and different things going on in the city before I could make a decision. So that's all for me.
Thank you.
And I would just note, on the city council salaries, some third-class cities, instead of having an annual salary, have a per-meeting pay, per diem, like some boards do. So on those, you may see a higher or lower number because of that. But they had the option at the beginning, when they set it up, to do it one way or the other.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions related to Bill 15?
Yeah. Could you allow the municipalities that had a similar population?
Sure. I have the population here. For example, Altoona has a population of 44,000. Their mayor was getting paid $75,000. Lancaster has 58,000 population. Their salary was, well, this is, I think the previous year was $103,085. I think it's a little higher than that. I think some of the, some of these have like a cost of living increase per year, because I looked at Lancaster for 2026, and they were at $105,539. and they were at $105,539. See, Wilkes-Barre has a population of 44,000 and their salary for mayor is $82,400. York had a population of 44,800 and their salary was $75,000. So those are the ones that are similar in size.
Thank you. And how much, what's the long-term cost in terms of pension for the cost of these increases?
I don't think you have anything to do with pension at all, do you?
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah, I mean, our pensions are calculated off of the last year's income or last year's salary with the municipality.
I didn't do that calculation, so I don't have that answer, so.
Okay, it would be good to know what it would end up costing, because I think, let's see. I am vested, in fact, this doesn't apply to me, but I am vested in pension, the mayor is vested in pension. I don't think there are any other council members vested, but they will, there are quite a few that will vest in the next election cycle. So those expenses should be taken into account. And, yeah, I think that's really, those are just my questions. I think we should, you know, the compensation should be comparable to other cities of the same size. So I think that's where we should be looking at. And also, I mean, I think the reality is, we know that our tax basis, our ability to collect taxes will be going down pretty soon. So we need to be very conservative. You know, I don't, yeah, so that's just generally speaking. So if you could just email me the information on municipalities of a comparable size, that would be great.
Thank you. Are there any other questions related to Bill 15 of 2025? Councilwoman Ross?
Yes, I just have one. I would agree with Councilwoman Daniels about just knowing what's the pension rate and seeing what other cities have the same amount of, same population as we do and what that compensation is. My other question was, how many terms do you need to be vested for the pension? Does anybody know that? I thought it was three, but I don't know if I'm wrong, or...
It's 10 years.
10 years, okay.
For example, Mayor Williams, because she held different roles, would be vested if she participated.
Because she was city council and then...
And Mr. Miller would be vested if he participated. I think Ms. Daniels is the only current council member who would be vested. But it's 10 years for anyone participating in that pension plan.
Okay, thank you very much for that information. I think, I mean, just a quick comment, because I still need to process everything. I think for me, it's this, the large raise of it, $5,000. And then we're going from $80,000 to $100,000, where like, other cities I heard like are $82,000. So it's like, I don't know why it's not moving up like in increment steps instead of like such a large jump. I do understand that there is, the cost of living is increasing. And I understand the mayor or administrator's pay is not, councils is not. But I'm, my fear is, we just got out of financial trouble. And we all took these positions knowing what the pay was and not really going... I know myself, I can't speak for everybody up here, but it wasn't about the pay for me, but what the city needed. And it's hard for me to ask for a raise when I know there are residents that are hurting and aren't receiving that, and this is taxpayers' money, and we just got out of financial trouble. So that's, I really just, I would love to see the sheet. I think I need more conversation and just making sure we're doing the right thing financially for our budget. So that's it for me.
Well, if I could mention something on the inflation. The average inflation generally looks at 2.7%, somewhere in that neighborhood. And I said the 25% seemed like a large bump, but over a 20-year period, it's only like 1.1%. So you're only keeping up with like less than half of what the inflation rate is. So when you were elected 20 years ago, that dollar is not buying, it's probably worth 80 cents on a dollar now, so. Again, it's your decision, it's your salaries, and we're just putting it out there and giving you an opportunity to vote on it, that's all.
Thank you. Well, as the interim acting business administrator, and you do help make those tough decisions and what's best for the budget, what is your opinion?
I don't have an opinion, because, honestly, I don't, because this does not affect me at all, so.
But it affects our city, that you are interim acting business administrator of. So you, as that, I don't know your whole job description, well, I do, but one of the pieces of it is for you to help the mayor make decisions that are good for the city. The business administrator position is very important. In a school district, in a city, they are almost mainly sometimes above the mayor in the sense of making decisions, because the mayor comes to you. They're like, you're her confidant, you help her make good decisions for the city. So if you don't have an opinion on it, I'm very nervous about this bill.
Well, it's a political question, and I try not to...
Not really, it's a question for the budget. It's a question of saying, is this a sound decision for our budget?
And you're talking about a $45,000 effect to the budget, which is, I mean, I've been an auditor for many, many years. And they say if you're under a certain amount of money, it's sort of inconsequential. And if I want from, when you're looking at a $90 million budget, $45,000 is not that much of a consequence.
Thank you for your opinion, Mr. Selkowsky, I appreciate, that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Yeah, I'll just add to that, that, you know, we are dealing with our taxpayers' money and we should spend it accordingly. Though I do think that people should deserve raises, people do deserve raises. But to Councilwoman Ross's point, we knew the job was hard when we took it. You know, I think the overall sentiment is that we have a lot of issues in the city of Harrisburg. And to, for me, I just can't enrich myself in what we're in a position. Could I use the extra 5K? Absolutely. Other people have full-time jobs. This is a part-time job on paper, but it's full-time work. I do this every day, all day. And of course, I could use the extra money, I have children and grandchildren, you know, but again, I'm just looking at the state of our city, is this the right time? Is this the right time? And I'm willing to, I mean, again, I don't know how this is going to go, but I'm willing to revisit this at a later date once we can get on one accord. And that's what I mean about fixing our process. We're not on the same accord when a lot of things come down. I think we should be able to have more conversations, administration, council. There's only certain council members that get to speak with the administration. Some of us are ignored. And until we can fix that process, yeah, I'm definitely not going to be voting yes. So that's all I have, Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill 15? Councilwoman Davis?
Thanks, President Hill. 20 years is a long time for anyone to not have a raise. But to Councilman Rodriguez's sentiments, elected officials are receiving calls or we're basically full-time workers. I didn't run for office for a paycheck, because I already have a paycheck. I wanted to serve the community, that's why I'm here. So $5,000, it's not going to break me or make me either way. But I also understand that for elected officials who are full-time, they are really full-time. I mean, I don't know what the hours are during the day, I would imagine, a nine-to-five. And then after-hours, with phone calls and everything else that goes on for the full-time elected officials who have been serving this community for 15, 20 years. I've been here just about two years, so again, I'm not concerned about the raise. But I am concerned that the people who deserve it, get it. And I know that all of us work hard, and our full-time elected officials work harder. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill 15? Okay, seeing and hearing none. I would like to table the bill momentarily, where it will remain in committee until we receive the document that you had that discussed some municipalities in terms of their mayoral compensation and some municipalities related to their city council compensation. I don't think it was very clear. You noted different municipalities during the second portion of the line of questioning than you did the first one. So I think it would be easier if we could see it. Maybe it would have been a better conversation that way. So I will keep this bill in committee until all outstanding or outside information that was shared here this evening is shared with council for their review. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 86 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 86, 2025. Resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Steve Zimmerman to provide access and services on the city's historical mainframe, programming operations, and related services in the Bureau of Information Technology.
Thank you. Mr. Bortner? This is a resolution that we are all familiar with, but if you wouldn't mind taking a moment just to remind everyone who you are, your capacity, and provide an overview of Resolution 86, please.
Sure. Good evening, City Council, I'm Steve Bortner, IT Director. So this resolution is similar to ones we've had in previous years, and it's to continue the personal services agreement with Steve Zimmerman for 2026. Steve's a retired city employee, he was a former IT director, and he's been operating in this capacity for quite a few years. He assists with the day-to-day operations of the IT Bureau and he fulfills many of the right-to-know requests for data that resides on the mainframe. He has a broad knowledge of the historical data and processes that are utilized within those systems. And that knowledge has been helpful as we attempt to export the data from the mainframe to migrate to the municipal system. The only difference between last year's agreement and this year's agreement is the hourly rate. The hourly rate, this year is $100, and the hourly rate proposed for next year is $115 per hour. But the total amount of the contract remains the same at $120,000. And through the end of November of this current contract, we've paid $100,350 with one invoice remaining for the rest of the year. So that's my summary overview, and thank you, and I'll turn it back to you for questions.
Thank you very much. I just have one question, I think I ask you this every year too. But how long do we anticipate the need for Mr. Zimmerman's services?
So last night, I presented that the mainframe away from the migration should be done by the end of 2026 with the need to reference it through mid-2027. So at this time last year, I thought this would be a partial year, but unfortunately, it's not. So I would anticipate 2026 being a full year and 2027 a partial year.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions, I'll open the floor to my colleagues who may have additional questions for you. I'll begin to my far right this time with Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions related to Resolution 86?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay. Vice President Green, any questions?
It's good to see you, but I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Good evening, Director Bortner, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President, good to see you, Mr. Bortner, no questions from me.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Thank you, no questions.
Thank you. Well, thank you for being here. I move to add Resolution 86 of 2025 to our next legislative session agenda for a formal vote. The final resolution for discussion with the Administration Committee is Resolution 89 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 89, 2025. A resolution approving the extension of the Broad Street Market Lease and Management Agreement between the city of Harrisburg and the Broad Street Market Alliance.
Thank you. Who from the Administration is present to discuss Resolution 89 of 2025?
I believe that will be me this evening, Madam President. We are all familiar with the current status of the Broad Street Market, the renovation that is going on because of the fire. The contract that was originally approved some years back expired and by its terms moved to a month-to-month term and has been in that status for quite a long time. The organization, the Broad Street Market Alliance, has received a state grant for renovations to the stone building. And the grant requires proof of a longer lease than a month-to-month, so they know that they have control of the property while they're doing the renovations. So what we had proposed is simply to extend the current lease formally out through December 31st of next year. And then to sit down with members of the city, the market, and other interested parties about what the long-term design of it. And it is very much for the purpose of getting through the grant that is there and utilizing those funds that are needed for the stone building. And those funds will do a little bit for the stone building, but you know, it's a few hundred thousand dollars. And the cost of buildings this old, to bring them up to date is extraordinary, as you know. And a long-term plan for the Broad Street Market is needed by the city, by third parties. And I think this is the impetus to get that done. Their board is voting tomorrow night, you know, and, you know, I believe a draft was sent to them today. But it's a very simple, simple extension to the end of the year. And the real work is to sit back at the table and work this out. I will note, I was in a meeting in 2022 with the then-president and one of the board members. And a new proposal was coming, trying to find a better way to make it work. And that proposal never showed up, because it is a difficult problem to solve. The city does not have a line of taxes or other revenue to pay for the ongoing costs of the physical plant of those facilities. The board, as a manager of it, really can't come up with a source of revenue to do that. And those are the problems that have to be solved long-term. So that is, you know, we have the mayor, as this is a way to do it, and bring people back to the table and have people put, you know, their shoulder to it and try to come up with a solution, as I believe you know, because you're on the board. So, yes, so the, with that, you know, that is really no more complicated than that. This is what is necessary to access the funding that's available.
Okay. Thank you for the updates, and yes, I am well-aware. I guess my only question would be, if this current agreement is extended through December of next year, when will great minds come together to discuss a solution?
We were asked to schedule a meeting starting in January. That's what the request was, and the mayor has to designate who's going to do that. We have had third-party inquiries of people wanting to be of assistance. Again, the mayor would have to talk about it, the association, about who else is in that. I would respectfully suggest near the city, nor the association has a lock on the good ideas on how to solve this problem. So the better, the more people with ideas, probably the better.
Okay. And so if the meetings begin in January, was there any discussion as to how frequent they would occur?
No, I think you have to figure out what the objective of the group is, right? But the objective is to get to the long-term sustainability of the property. That is the object.
My concern is, with extending this another year, that we'll be back here next December with another extension. That's my concern, since it hasn't...
Well, I will note, the term in the agreement is it goes to month-to-month if it expires, right? And so, and I think I wrote a very colorful email this year or last year to the board, one of the board members and their directors about, the city is painfully aware that we're on a month-to-month arrangement and the city's in no position to take over the management of that. So it's in everyone's interest to get to a solution. Like many public problems, the solution part that's hard is... Like many public problems, the solution part that's hard is is the source of revenue. That's that's the hard part, and uh um you know, but now seems like the appropriate time as we're literally investing what we're investing to bring the brick building back uh from where it is, and it's a time of high interest in its long-term sustainability. So it seems like the right time to have people at the table and ideas on how to do it. I would suggest the idea is something different than we have now. That would be my own professional opinion.
I hope it is too. Um I would like to see the actual reporting come to fruition. That was something that I've been asking about since maybe twenty twenty-two. When this at soon after this expired, I began asking about the reporting mechanism that's built in, because it never occurred.
So to be frank, the agreement is nicely written, and it didn't work at all, right? I mean, it kept the building open, it kept the market open, but in terms of the association and the city having a mechanism, you know, uh it didn't work, and it it didn't work because of money. I mean, that that like to have someone reporting on a regular basis means someone has the money to do the work and do the reporting, and and simply telling someone that's their job, and they're out there, you know, worrying about how the floor is getting swept, you know, that is not really a way to get things done. I mean, that's the reality. The boards are all volunteers, right? And and you know, sometimes lots of people participate, sometimes very few participate. Um that structure doesn't work very well. Um and you know, that's where I think just grown-ups have to sit down at the table and decide, you know, how is this gonna work? What's the best idea people have moving forward? But other than the fact that the market stayed open and kept serving people, in terms of on that part, it worked. On fixing the long-term capital issues and raising money, all those other ideas and technical reporting, it did not work. And um and that that's the simple reality of it.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. I'm gonna open the floor to my colleagues who may have additional questions. This time, I'd like to begin with Councilwoman Rawls. Any questions?
Uh thank you, President Hill. My question was the same as yours, as you know, what uh was the mechanism after we extended? Um just making sure we're being proactive and we're not waiting for the tenth hour to to for us to approve something after this extension, but um we'll see what happens and um but that was my question as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh thank you, Solicitor Grover, for that um information. As we all know, extensions are pretty much just temporary solutions, Band-Aids over the problem, and um as we all would love to see that brick building get back to its best state. It's beautiful bringing people in for tourism, and it generates a lot of money for the city, as you guys are all aware, everyone's aware of that, so I'm pretty sure I I I speak for the body when we say we would love to see that brick-and-mortar building back up, running, bringing in revenue for the city. It's just how do we get there? And um it's just concerning because what if, quote-unquote, that conversation doesn't begin, and we're just looking for another extension, December thirty-first, twenty-six, and so on and so forth, so hopefully, you know, those conversations start sooner than later. Um and I just can't state enough that, you know, I just look forward to seeing the Broad Street Market open, fully operational, with those vendors back in that brick building, just thriving, so thank you for being here and giving us that information. Nothing further, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Uh yes, my question would be around um the tent, the temporary tent. Um since we're talking about finances again, um what is the city currently paying, or what are we anticipated to pay as long as this tent is there?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. It's but but we can get you that. It's it's a written lease for both the tent is one lease, the heating system is a separate lease, and the land is a third lease. I mean, so there's three long-term expenses that go on with that.
I think it's um five thousand dollars a month. Then in twenty-six, it'd be sixty-five hundred a month. And I'm not sure what the twenty-seven is supposed to be the completion.
But that's not all three of them. That's just one of the three leases.
That's a lot of money, so how how is this-
I'm not unaware.
Listen, I'm just, my question is, again, how how was how would this part affect that if without the extension or with the extension? How would that affect us taxpayers' money being spent on this temporary land?
This will not affect that whatsoever.
Okay.
Um it has a and that is, that started during the point where we were already at a month-to-month operation. And you gotta remember, the lease that the Broad Street Market Association has, more importantly than a lease, is it's a lease and management agreement, right? And so they have the agreement to manage the facility.
Yeah, we're just landlord tenant, I get it.
Yeah, but but more than that, because of the landlord, you know, is one thing.
Do some stuff, yeah, you have to keep it up and all that.
So but they have to run the business side of it, and um the uh so that doesn't change. The diff- the only thing that will happen if this did not get adopted is that they would not have access to the federal or the state funds they got to do the improvements to the other building that they now have, which is somewhere between three and five hundred thousand dollars. I forget the exact number.
Okay, um thank you for that clarification. So the only thing that I would ask, if we can get the um actual numbers for um what we're what the taxpayers are gonna be spending for-
We'll get you what the January payments are gonna be for all three leases.
Yep, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you. No, no questions for me at this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Um no questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. So with the information that will be shared regarding the actual numbers, um I would like to add Resolution eighty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five to our next legislative session agenda for a formal vote. This concludes the business of the Administration Committee. We will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, to lead discussion.
Thank you, President Hill. Uh the Budget and Finance Committee will begin with Bill fourteen of twenty twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you read that into the record, please?
Bill fourteen, twenty twenty-five, in ordinance amending Chapter five dash five oh three, tax abatement and exemptions of Title V Licensing and Taxation Code to further extend the statutory termination date by one year to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you very much. And who from the Administration is gonna present on this? Good evening. If you wouldn't mind giving us an overview, uh and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you. This is a bill requesting uh that council consider extending the LERTA program for another year. As you know, we came before you in the early part of uh this year and requested an extension for LERTA um because we need to revise the legislation. It involves participation from the county and the school district. Um we do have for not not for public review yet, because we formed a committee that represented not only the three entities that I just spoke about, but also investors, developers, and so forth, to participate in helping us look at the current policy to revise it. We have a draft, and we've had a draft ready, but our problem has been is the school district um going through um their uh getting out of um receivership. Um the person on their board that was assigned to participate in our committee became ill and wasn't able to participate. We contacted the school district and asked them for another person to be assigned uh to that task. Um we did not get a response until, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago? If that.
If that, yeah.
Um and um they have the legislation, the draft legislation, that we asked for them to provide input from their system. Now, the county has already responded to us, and they're fine with what we've done. We're still waiting for the school district. They need more time. Uh they have a new solicitor, solicitor, they have um council mem- well, they, I'm sorry, not council members, but um school board members, they were just um reinstalled, I think, this week. And so for and they need time to go through our amendment within within their system. Uh I think uh Solicitor Grover spoke with the solicitor at the district recently.
I I we we just emailed them about the the extension update to the solicitor of the county and the school district. Um and uh th- they they were the ones who we communicated with last year for this. Um and they still to speak with their client. But they are they're obviously in transition. I mean, a year ago, when we did the extension, it was a receiver who, you know, had immediately backed to us. Uh this time, it's gotta go through a process with um the solicitor, the superintendent, and the board.
Yeah, I wanna add also, I actually spoke with uh Dr. Henry and also Dr. Stokes, and again, they're saying they need more time, because it just like Mr. Grover said, they are gonna have to go through their entire body, actually review everything. So they just need more clarification on their end to actually extend it, but they're going through transition, so they were asking to please just give more time.
I wanna add that this uh legislation requires us to have a public meeting, so we are moving ahead to have our public meetings, so we we can get input from the community. And so for that was something that we move forward to do, so we'd like to move forward with doing that, so that doesn't hold us up once the district gets back to us with their comments, concern, or their approval.
Thank you very much. Um I don't really have many questions at the moment. Uh I did sit in on some of the the LERTA meetings throughout the year, uh and so I kinda got some information from that as the process was occurring. Um I know we kinda had this conversation around the same time last year as far as extending LERTA. Uh I know some some questions and things with that, so I'm glad to hear that there is a draft um and that a conversation was held with the county and is being held with the school district and just kinda waiting for their update. I'm gonna start to my far right with Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions or comments regarding Bill fourteen of twenty twenty-five?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Vice President Green. Um Director Martin Roberts, when do you expect to have the public hearing? Do you?
Jason, do you have that off the top of your head?
Yeah, I believe it was the seventeenth. We just wanted to make sure what was gonna happen tonight, but it was gonna be the seventeenth.
And is it just gonna be for one one day?
Yes, this one, this is for as of now, one session, yes.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and just to clarify, that's December seventeenth?
Yes, if I'll I'll get you the exact, I think I'm going off the top of my head, I believe it is the seventeenth, so it's a week from now.
All right.
Actually, I think we're on hold it here in the chambers.
Yes.
Interesting, okay. Um I'm going to pass it to President Hill now. Any questions?
Thank you. Um thanks for asking that clarifying question, because I was like, the seventeenth of what? December, January?
I'm sorry, December, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I was just curious. Um so I know we're waiting for the school district. Did the county provide any feedback on the draft, and what was their input like?
Uh their input is pretty much, I mean, they're in they're in um aligned with what we wanna do. As far as like moving forward, it's just, again, we're waiting on the school just because they are the biggest piece. So again, it's up to them as far as like what they would actually want, or what they would actually wanna try to compensate as far as like making an equal for everybody.
Okay. And then my second question is around um goals. Should this be extended, um and learning from what happened over the last ten years, were goals articulated um to the county as well? Did they discuss any goals?
Uh to an extent, and as I said, their with the county's take on it is where the administration of the program. So their input is basically doing the assessments to make sure everybody is compliant or actually eligible to receive it. So and then along with the school district as well, they're going off of our lead, so they're basically trying to work together as tandem.
Okay. Um, okay, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Um um, Madam Chair, I I might add that the school district, I mean, that the uh Dalton County participated in almost every meeting. So they were integral to helping make the additions and the amendments
Oh, good.
to the legis- yeah, so so when they got the full packet, they were, you know, prepared to act on it.
Right, that's that's good. I'm I'm glad to hear that. I would just like to ensure, as always, like there's a uh a mechanism for evaluation as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Vice President Green. Good evening to you both. Thank you for being here. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and thank you both for joining us this evening, as always. Uh when we talk about tax abatement, I understand it's like a double-edged sword for the benefit it brings to our businesses, attracting, but also kinda puts a pause on revenue that we can bring into the city. So it has that double-edged sword. I just wish we would have known a bit earlier about the twelve seventeen meeting, because I would love to be present, as we always state, get us that information. With Christmas coming up, holidays, it's kinda hard for us to be everywhere, but I would have definitely put that on my calendar, because the residents' input would probably be the most important regarding this, in my opinion. Um the business owners' input, how it's affecting them, the positive reactions from these business owners that utilize the LERTA. Just wanted to find out more. Um I would hate to make an uneducated decision or just kinda guesstimate these things. I would love to hear the feedback from these residents, business owners, et cetera, but I do appreciate your hard work towards this. Um nothing further. Thank you.
Ralph, I'm sorry, Ms. Rodriguez, I keep going. So I would like to know, um this prob-
Councilman-
Council- Um this probably won't probably be the only session. Again, we're still gonna have to have um the feedback from the school district. So there's probably gonna be continuous to actually talk more with the public to see what their comments are.
And that that even to that point, that even adds extra layers, because I would love to know what, you know, Commissioner Douglas or Commissioner Hartwick, how they feel about it, Commissioner Priest, um you know, Dr. Henry Benjamin Benjamin Henry, um Marisol Craig, you know, to see how it's working for the district, their do's, their don'ts, their wants, their needs. You know, I would like to bring everyone to the table in here, you know, I would just just speaking for myself, I I wouldn't wanna make a decision on this in any legislative session with partial information or guessing or wishing. These are the things that always tend to kinda backfire on us. But I do understand how it could benefit and also hurt in the same time.
Just like you said, it is a double-edged sword.
Absolutely.
So, because you have to look at it as how, moving forward, the basically looking at how we would go as far as like how the abatements would go going moving forward, but you also have to look at, okay, either we're gonna help develop properties or we're gonna have properties sit.
Yeah.
So either way, you're looking at health at health issues and also danger issues. Um talking to the school district over the years, especially with abandoned properties near schools, you're asking about safety issues, about who owns properties and so forth.
Yes.
Um so and again, also, this could be an opening up. Um I mean, I've had this conversation a few times of going forward of what to do with the initial properties that are actually causing the vacant and blighted issues. So that's another question, because again, this LERTA is just one piece
Yes.
of an actual, I mean, figure, so what are you gonna do to move forward as far as what we can do to take away or help alleviate the problem with the blighted invite the blighted and vacant properties? Because property owners have a lot of leeway.
Yes.
Because the only thing we're actually able to do with this state and a lot of other states is just register your property. As long as you're paying your taxes, if you get fines, you're paying, but there's no real super consequences as far as like what would happen if the property stayed vacant.
And and I appreciate that. It's just, just tonight, let's just just take tonight, you know, not even di- diving too deep, we're peeling back too many layers. We went from the raises to the payments on the Broad Street Market, now the reduction of, you know, with the abatement through the LERTA. It 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 kinda raises a lot of, you know, red hairs or red, you know, senses when we're like, okay, how are we generating income? Let's start having conversations on how we're bringing revenue in, because a lot of these discussions are kinda going out, but is that really sustainable? What's the long-term plan for these things?
I'll say this, I know we're not gonna really talk about what we've done as far as like the bill unless it's at-
And that's not a for debate either.
So but you do have a a member from council that is on the committee, and she could share with you the information that you do have. So and you can see what we're actually working on, so it actually benefits us.
Just to port a order, I wouldn't wanna put Madam President on the spot with that. I wouldn't wanna, you know, do that.
But if this it we are, we did work on something that would benefit um all three entities, so we can actually actually see revenue.
And I respect that. I'm just trying to do the best I can with the information that we're given, try to disseminate it as quickly as we can to make the best sound decision for the residents, you know. Sometimes we're in between a rock and a hard place, and we're just trying to, I just really wish we would have got that data ahead of time, because that's something I absolutely would have been to and attended.
And just to clarify, this is to extend what we have, not to do anything new.
Yep.
So it's kind of like we we're not making a a decision on the draft that we haven't seen yet. It's extending what we have to to give us more time. That's kinda what we did last year, extending what we have to give us more time and have the discussion.
But in my opinion, that even raised more red hairs, because is what we have working? How's it been working? What's the metrics and numbers for that? You know, what it's just, it even raises raises more questions.
Yeah, and like as like this time that goes on, it's over the past like four years of- Yeah, and like as like this time that goes on, it's over the past like four years, I've submitted that information. Again, talking about my own quirks as far as like what could be done different, what could we do? Again, again, I wasn't here when the original one was made or the one prior to that.
Plus, I don't want to pretend like I have amnesia. I just remember from past conversations right here in this chamber.
I'm agreeing with you.
Where many directors said LERTA wasn't working, we had some directors saying it was working. So I'm just trying to do my best to make the sound decision. Please don't fault me for that.
No, no, no. And then, like I said, just like I said a few minutes ago, again, LERTA is just one piece. So again, what are you going to do with the other properties that are sitting vacant? So prime example, the eight hundred and some odd properties that are vacant in Allison Hill, that came from a committee group that I'm on with Blueprint Communities. We did the we did the census reports in order to actually get that number. And again, you have a lot of property owners that own those properties just sitting on them. And they're basically looking for whenever the boom is going to happen. So that's a big piece of why you don't have a lot of.
But that's why the economic development plan is essential and hopefully we can start those meetings soon.
Yeah, but that's also going to be something that's going to have to be look at some way that we as a city can actually put something in the play to help. That's going to that's a that's a conjunction thing as far as they're working together.
Absolutely.
So again, again, your part's going to be needed in that as far as the city council, what we can do moving forward to actually put something in the play. So we're holding more accountability towards the towards the property owners versus just letting properties sit.
Absolutely.
Because we have properties, and again, we're all from this area, properties sitting for over thirty years.
Yep.
They have this been sitting sitting vacant.
Yep.
And that's a that's an issue.
The pie in the pot, pie in the sky, getting those properties on the tax roll and generate some revenue from those would be amazing. And it's not to discredit anything you and Ms. Gloria Roberts are doing. I'm just giving my, you know, sentiments on, you know, how we can collaborate or even cooperate a bit better in hindsight. But thank you both for joining us this evening, and thank you. Nothing further, Madam Vice President.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jones, any questions or comments?
Yeah. I'm not a big fan of LERTA. Just historically, you know, having to wait for revenue to come in. Again, we're looking at, again, bringing our city to a place where we have a steady flow coming in. Can you make this clear to me? Are you, I mean, with this extent, first, let me ask this question. Are you looking at something? Now, you heard a little bit of discussion of what you were saying. Is there something different adding to LERTA or are you looking to move away from LERTA?
No, we're not looking away from use from a tax incentive, but we're looking at to modify it so it's actually going to be beneficial for tax revenue.
I got you because that's that was my that was my thing. I just don't like the way that is currently in in effect. Again, waiting for an extensive period of time for the city to actually see something, though something does come in, but not at the rate that it would. Hopefully, again, looking back at the economic development plan, this is very, this is intricate to our city again, man. Because when we look at revitalization, you have, it's very attractive for, I mean, developers to come in with LERTA. But the businesses, it's 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 a bunch of red tape for them to cut through to to every, you know, I can see why it's tough for people to come in here to do business with us. So looking at that, hopefully, a pivotal moment in time right now is the Poli Clinic. Because that's one, you know, we could see instant revenue. I think as they said, at least seven hundred, three quarters of a million dollars just in taxes. I mean, hopefully, that project being successful will bring other developers into our city and not having to use these abatements all the time. You know, looking to generate revenue on their end and make sure that everybody wins, right? So I would love to see what what the the new direction of LERTA is because I'm not, again, I'm just not a big fan of it. And hopefully, you can share some of that information. I really wasn't aware that there were discussions around it. I thought we were looking to move away from it. So with this extension, may I ask, for a year, correct? Are we going to be taking in more people coming in, developing, using this? And then, you you know what I'm saying? Because if you're going to change it, you don't want to tie them into what we have right now and then come back again for another extension.
So most likely, the what I discussed last year, you do have projects that are stalled. And then, again, you have to go through CRW, you have to go through a lot of things as far as like changing development plans. So it's honestly, you you're looking at the projects that are currently in motion. And that's just, I'm not speaking on behalf of them, I'm just saying that's usually what happens. So.
That's why I'm asking. I get that there are projects.
And there hasn't really been a lot of, and to be honest with you, there honestly has not been a lot of full movement on.
So.
Yeah, because of.
The next question would be, is this enough time?
Uh, I would say so, yes.
I mean, if it's kind of confusing to me because if we 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 don't have movement, and then all of a sudden, we get this extension and then we're looking to revise. What's the anticipation on the revision of 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 LERTA? Timeline wise, a year, two years?
No.
They have to tie to tax years.
Yeah.
So our our tax year is January one, right, for real estate taxes? So that's what it's got to tie to.
Okay. So again, I would ask, do you think that this is enough time? With current projects, and then what about those people looking to come do projects now to use LERTA, to utilize LERTA? What would that look like?
The same as I tell any developer that talks about using LERTA, you still have to submit your plans, you still have to be approved. So if they don't meet the deadline, they don't meet the deadline. So we can't, we can't determine on what they're going to do if they don't have everything sufficient to move forward. That's not a decision.
The LERTA applications are tied to the when you apply for your building permit.
Yes.
Right? Not when you put your land development plan in, not when you get a zoning, when you put a building permit in.
Everything has to be approved before you can go forward.
And you're not allowed to give it to someone who didn't apply, right? So what it does is.
That's clarifying. That's that's okay.
Right. And so your options, if you didn't extend it, there just wouldn't be a LERTA starting in twenty twenty six, and there couldn't be one in reality before twenty twenty seven.
Right.
And the question is, would developers just stop because one's coming, right? Right, that's.
I mean, I get it. You want to use other people's money to build. I get it, right?
But the important thing about abatement is it doesn't cut a penny of the taxes we actually collect because it only applies to increased value in real estate when it's assessed by the county after the project is done. You could put a million dollars into a property and the assessment comes back at a hundred thousand, it's still a hundred thousand dollar property.
Even with this reassessment of these empty buildings?
Yes. So it is the increased assessed value that is abated, not the current tax on it. So it so and so encourages us to put money in to create increased value in a property. The the structure, as as Jason Pres explored, as Gores explored, some people do it on a step stage. We had a, you know, a cliff, right? And there's different points of view which it is.
So what is the reason that you say that there's no movement right now? What is what is the issue?
Towards the end of the year. And a lot of times, to be honest with you, construction really doesn't go on until the summertime, so it's it's towards the end of the year. You have certain projects that are going on now that were approved previously, looking at probably maybe doing some, I guess, foundation things.
There's no doing on us, those pretty much developers, okay?
Because as I say, just like and just like Mr. Grover is saying, is just like you have, if you have a property that's five hundred thousand dollars, you have another five hundred in there, you're still getting taxed on the original five hundred.
Absolutely.
So it's not, you're not, yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully, I can just, I think someone asked for that, or you will be forwarding the information on what it what it would look like moving forward if this extension is approved. So you will be sending that over to us, right? All right. Yeah, that's a yeah. But you're on record now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Davis, did you have a follow up question?
No, just I was going to read this because it can be confusing before our residents, in layman's term terms. Tax abatement is a reduction or exemption from taxes granted by government for a specific period of time. This is typically used as an incentive to encourage economic development, such as new investments or improvements in property within a particular area. It can help stimulate business growth, improve infrastructure, or enhance real estate value by reducing the tax burden on individuals and businesses. So in layman's terms, just for the residents or whoever.
Thank you very much. If there are no other comments or questions, I'm going to ask this be moved to our next legislative agenda. Thank you very much for being here tonight and for your presentation.
Thank you.
We will continue to move on with Resolution eighty seven of twenty twenty five. Mr. Truesdale, would you read that into the record, please?
Resolution eighty seven, twenty twenty five. Resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a collection agreement with the Harrisburg School District for the collection of the business privilege and mercantile tax and the amusement tax for the twenty twenty six tax year.
Thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and then giving us an overview. And then we'll have any questions if if any of my council members have any.
Good evening. City Council Mike Hughes, tax administrator. As we briefly touched on last evening, we also collect the business privilege, mercantile, and amusement taxes for the school district. We first started, our first agreement with the school district started in two thousand and one, and we've had continuing agreements of different terms ever since. The current collection rate is at four percent, the gross amount that we collect. The rest is pretty straightforward, so if you have any questions, I can answer those.
Thank you very much. This is kind of something we do every year. I don't have any questions regarding it. Just on an aside, thank you for getting back to us with the response from our question last night and getting us the penalty amount collected. Even though you guys were here very late, you got it to us very promptly, and I appreciate that. I don't have any questions. I'm going to start to my far left here with Councilwoman Jones.
How you doing today, this evening?
Fine, thank you.
Long night last night?
Yes.
No questions.
Thank you very much. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Always good to see you, Mr. Hughes. No questions from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Good morning. Good morning. See? I wasn't even here. I was on Zoom and I'm still tired from last night. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Thank you very much. President Hill?
Thank you. Good evening. I don't have any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you. No questions for me either.
Thank you very much. And Councilwoman Daniels, any questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I'm going to ask this is moved to our next legislative agenda. Have a great night.
You too, thank you.
We kept it shorter tonight.
Appreciate it.
And I'm going to pass it back to President Hill.
Thank you, Vice President Green. The next committee business lies with the Public Safety Committee. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones, to lead discussion.
Thank you, President Hill. Mr. Truesdale, can you please read Resolution ninety two of twenty twenty five into the record?
Resolution ninety two, twenty twenty five. Resolution approving, adopting, and placing into immediate effect the Dolphin County twenty twenty five Emergency Operations Plan as the official emergency operations plan of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. We have someone here representing. Come on up, state your name, birth date, blood type.
Senior Deputy Chief Michael Sauter. I'm fairly old. I don't know my blood type. It's red.
No, can you just give us a brief overview of Resolution ninety two?
Yeah, so Dolphin County prepares several plans for us and other municipalities over the years. We just did the hazard mitigation plan a couple of weeks ago. That plan looks at how we can improve things and try to alleviate some issues coming moving forward. The operations plan is how we respond to.
Excuse me, can you?
Oh, sorry. The emergency operations plan talks about how we respond to certain incidents. So it is truly a, it's a link for the emergency management between local county and state governments. Developing contacts, how we get our resources as large scale incidents can tend to grow. How we would reach out as a local responder, say, we're out of resources, we need the next level. We can communicate with county agencies, then they can help us provide with state agencies, and then we can all come together. And it's done for the same language, using the same terminology, and then everybody's on the same page for the most part. And everybody through Dolphin County adopts this plan. It also, once it's signed, it allows us funding, ability for funding for disaster relief and stuff like that through the state for flooding and other types of emergencies.
All right. So we have a plan. It's good to hear. It's good to hear. We have a plan. This is very understandable to me. I really don't have any questions. I'll open up the floor to my colleagues that may have questions, and I'll start in the center with President Hill.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Vice President Green?
Thank you for being here tonight. I don't have any questions.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Good evening. I don't have any questions either. I understand this resolution.
Councilwoman Daniels, if you're still with us.
Yeah, no questions. Thank you.
All right, and I'll go to Mr. Rodriguez, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Deputy Chief, it's always a pleasure seeing you. Great history together. I completely understand the importance of adopting this, so thank you for your work. And tell Chief Enline I said hey.
I will.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Councilwoman Jocelyn Rawls.
Thank you for that nice introduction. Good evening. I don't have any questions. Only question I had earlier was just the different languages and the translation of it, and I know that's something we're working on, even county wise. So I just wanted to let the public know the answer to that that question because we hadn't met again about the plan. So I don't have any questions. It's a much needed plan, and I know in the future we can try to get it translated into different languages to process.
And that's that's the county would that would be who's working on that, yes, correct.
And that's what the answer was. The question was in the emails, the county is working on that as best as they can, and I understand that. So that's it for me.
Okay.
All right, thank you. If no one else has any more questions or comments, I'd like to thank you for explaining to the public what this is. And I would ask that Resolution ninety two of twenty twenty five be moved to our next legislative session, and I would ask my colleagues to support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm good evening.
Thank you. Our final committee business this evening lies with the Public Works Committee, so I will defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez, to lead discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, the Public Works Committee will be meeting to discuss three resolutions. Mr. Truesdale, can you please read Resolution eighty eight of twenty twenty five into the record?
Resolution eighty eight, twenty twenty five. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of General Services for the purpose of authorizing the city to provide municipal solid waste, refuse, industrial, lunchroom, office waste, and recycling collection and disposal services for designated DGS facilities within the city.
Thank you for that. And I see who who from Public Works, Kevin Jackson, Mr. John, who would be coming up, Director Wes? Good to see you all, gentlemen. Good evening. Great to see you guys. Mr. John or Mr. Jackson, whoever would like to give overhaul of Resolution eighty eight of twenty twenty five? Good eve, good evening. Mr. Jackson, can you talk directly?
Now it's on.
Oh, you gotta let it go? All right, as of right now, we oversee DGS trash collection throughout the year. And Mr. Grover's word is also, they've been reaching out to us to oversee their recycling program. We've been through several emails throughout the year. Just got a prior email just probably like two weeks ago. They're looking to start this in February. So it will bring more revenue to the city as well as we oversee their recycling program. And we're just trying to, you know, bring it to council to see if that they will move forward with this program that they're reaching out to us to take over the city.
All right. Awesome. Mr. John, anything to add? All right, I have no questions. I'll open it up to my colleagues on council. I'll start to my far right with Councilwoman Daniels. All right, I will.
All right, no questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Vice President?
I don't have any questions regarding this. Thank you.
Absolutely, Madam President.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to review the the term. So it's effective January first, twenty twenty six, for a term of five years with the option of two additional five year extensions. So I always think that's a great opportunity.
That's the wrong one, but you're right.
That's the wrong one? Okay.
That's the recycling.
Wait. Oh, sorry.
So that would be the that would be the last one. Resolution ninety one.
Oh, okay. Because it says it in this one. Oh, okay, because it says it in this one too, though, is that? Okay, well, glad I mentioned it then. Okay, so thank you for the correction, Mr. Jackson. I don't have any other questions, I think it makes sense, if you've been already engaged with DGS, why not continue in a greater capacity, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls.
Good evening to you both, thank you for being here, anything that's gonna bring the city more revenue in this state of uncertainty is good for me, so I don't have any questions.
All right, and looking for my other colleagues, I will, I'll come back to see if they have any questions, but in the meanwhile, I'll move forward to Resolution 90 of 2025.
Mr. Rodriguez, just wanted to know, Councilman, the one unique thing about DGS's long-term agreement is they have what's called the most favored nation kind of clause, so we are obligated, if we give anyone a better rate, to give them that rate as well to Commonwealth. So, on this, they're very good negotiators, so they make sure they get the lower rate that we charge anyone, we're guaranteed to give it to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Well, that's great to know, thank you Solicitor Grover for that information. Absolutely. Mr. Truesdale, can you please read Resolution 90 of 2025 into the record, please?
Resolution 90, 2025, resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Harrisburg School District to provide salt to the school district at a price of $125 per ton during the 2025-2026 winter season.
Thank you for that, gentlemen, would you like to give a quick overhaul of Resolution 90 of 2025?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
So, the school district calls and requests salt by the ton, typically 20 tons at a time, and we provide that salt to them so that they can make the path safe for the children during parking lots, sidewalks, different paths that the school district use, so this is something that they have been doing for a few years now, so, and we, we provide about 20 tons to them roughly per storm.
Per storm, that's interesting, all right. I have no questions regarding this, but I would open up to my colleagues, starting with my immediate right, Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, I just love that the city and the school district are working together on this, it's almost like we're paying each other, in a sense, so I think, I love this resolution and hearing it said out loud, so, and with the camera crews here, so I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Madam President.
I don't have any questions, it's a no-brainer, anything for the safety and protection of our children, so thank you.
Absolutely, we're looking to have a bad winter too, so, yeah. Madam Vice President?
I don't have any questions for you, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman?
No questions, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Daniels?
No questions, thank you.
All right, so moving forward on our agenda, Mr. Truesdale, can you please read Resolution 91 of 2025 into the record?
Resolution 91, 2025, resolution authorizing the renewal of a services agreement with Penn Waste Incorporated to continue to serve as the city's single stream recycling disposal service.
All right, thank you, and gentlemen, if you'd like to give a overhaul of Resolution 91 of 2025?
So, they reached out to Dave and myself, probably like a week or two ago, to discuss extending the contract. As you can see, Waste Connect has took over for Penn Waste, so when they offered us a contract for two years, Mr. West jumped in and said, could we do four, or what would they offer us for, so that we try to get locked in, so that, so you know, throughout the years, each year the rates go up, so we try to lock into a rate that allow us to be locked in for the next four years, so that way we won't get hammered in the next few years.
All right, thank you, and I have no questions, I appreciate that, and always looking, you know, forward and trying to get the best benefits for the city, I really appreciate that, guys, and I will start once again to my far right, Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Rawls?
No, I don't have any questions, just thank you, Director West, for being proactive and jumping in front of that, I mean, thank you all too, I know you're sitting right here, I see Director West, but that's just great, being proactive, I think that's what we need for the city, so thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you, I just wanted to review these terms to make sure this one is right. The agreement shall be for an initial period of four years, beginning January 1st, 2026, through December 31st of 2030, and automatically renewal, and automatically renews thereafter for successive terms of one year each, unless either party gives written notice of the termination to the other party by certified mail at least 30 days prior to the expiration of the then existing term in accordance with paragraph six. That one sounds right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Vice President?
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Rodriguez, I don't have any questions for you, I just want to say thank you, thank you for doing all the behind-the-scenes work that nobody sees, you know, the early hours, the three, one time I got up at 3:00 AM, I had to go somewhere, and I got, I went outside and his car was pulling up on me, I got scared, realized it was a trash, and I'm like, wait, they're up this early on a regular basis, but a lot of your work doesn't get seen, because you're kind of, part of your job is to like stay out of the way, get it done without people realizing it's being done, but you provide a very important service to the city, and so I thank you for that, you're also a very important revenue stream for the city, one of the few that we have left, and a lot of people don't realize that, and I appreciate you guys for always continuing to expand and find new ways to be able to bring more revenue to the city, and then also service our neighbors and surrounding areas to show them the great work that we have in the city, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Davis?
My sentiments, same thing, I always tell you guys, thank you, I know the residents appreciate you, you go above and beyond the call of duty all the time, at any time, so I want to say thank you again and again and again and again.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, and Councilman Jones?
I'll just say what they said. No, I'm very familiar with these things, and you guys do do a wonderful job, so again, thank you for your service, that's it.
All right, and with that being said, is there anything extra you gentlemen would like to add this evening?
We're good.
With that, I move to add Resolution 88 of 2025, Resolution 90 of 2025, and Resolution 91 of 2025 to our next legislative session, and that concludes the business of the Public Works Committee, thank you.
Thank you, we will move forward, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, please, we will move forward with our meeting agenda, we will open the floor for public comment, just a few housekeeping notes before we begin, please state your name and your address for the meeting record, if you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city, you will have four minutes to share your comments, Mr. Truesdale has added a timer to the screen for your reference, I will begin to my right, is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Okay, please come to the microphone.
Hello, my name's Evan Mock, I live on Penn Street, just inside the Midtown Line. I'm here today representing my organization, Power to the Hill, we are a nonpartisan, all-volunteer group dedicated to improving the lives of those residing in the Allison Hill neighborhood. Through direct partner with our Allison Hill neighbors, we advocate for increased voter engagement and active citizenship to inspire community action. Though much of our work is focused on registering people to vote and encouraging them to engage in the electoral process, a significant component of our organization revolves around our community action projects. Our recent project, Light the Hill, focused on reporting and replacing non-functioning streetlights, as well as providing neighbors with free high-efficiency bulbs to help keep their porches illuminated with the goal of deterring crime and enhancing safety. In total, we are proud to report that we've had close to 100 broken streetlights reported and fixed to date, and we've distributed dozens upon dozens of these high-efficiency bulbs in areas where crime was most prevalent. So that brings us to why I'm here today in planning our next community action project. We've been soliciting direct feedback from Allison Hill residents regarding the issues that are most pressing to them. At our community dinner in March of this year, residents identified 10 major issues impacting daily life. In the ensuing months, we've gone door-to-door diligently surveying hundreds of our Allison Hill neighbors in an attempt to narrow down these 10 issues into just one. So after a second community dinner, and shout out to Councilmember Jones for attending, that was at the beginning of November, we had an official, or we officially selected the topic of improving access to youth programming, specifically in Allison Hill. So recently, some of my colleagues had a very initial discussion with Councilwoman Rawls, and just learned more about the lack of city-funded or city-provided programming, especially in Allison Hill, and we would like to work with the city, moving forward to 2025, work with city council, to help provide safe, quality, and accessible programming for our children, particularly after school and during the summer months. And also, we would like to invite all council members to the end-of-year, Power to the Hill end-of-year celebration, this Saturday, December 13th, at Christ Lutheran Church on 13th Street in Allison Hill from 12:00 to 2:00, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Hello, it's Ed Jerak, 1521 Second Street, let me get my notes, just a few observations. Number one, on the raise, I just want to remind everybody, the city's budget, according to my Google, is $142 million a year, that's a big organization to be running. I think that the mayor, who's in my view the CEO, is worthy of making more than $100,000 a year. Same thing for all the council members, I know all you guys come to all these meetings all the time, and I see you all around the public in different events, and so I appreciate all your service, and I think you guys are worth a raise too. And I will say, you know, Councilwoman Jones, I hear your concerns, but I just don't want to miss, there's a small window, I think, of when this can be, you know, adjusted, or, you know, so I don't think we want to wait three months, it might be too late, so that's my only comment on the raise. Then next, sorry, my notes went away, on Broad Street Market, thanks for the extension. I try to attend most of the Broad Street Market meetings just as a citizen, and I think, and I will say, I have not read the lease, I've heard the terms are basically, we lease the building for $1, and then they take care of it. I think the key we've all got to put our heads together is, where are we going to set up a capital account, a sinking fund, where either you, the market, somebody can put money into that isn't going to get, you know, taken from whatever, and I don't know how we do that, or where that's supposed to be, but, you know, I did the math, we're getting ready to spend like 21 million, I think, on the rebuild, and if you take a capital building, and normally they have a 27 and a half year depreciation schedule, that's like $25,000 a month, do you know what I'm saying? So as we look ahead, you know, that new building is going to need replaced AC, all kinds of things, so these are going to be bigger numbers, right? And I think it's, it's not like Solicitor said, it's not going to be easy, but we've got to get, you know, all the people in the room and figure it out, so it's, it's not just all coming at us at one time. And last, on LURDA, you know, thanks for the update, I didn't know that was going on, I've watched LURDA years ago when they passed the first one, and et cetera, et cetera, I think my observation is, it's not working for everybody, I'm not smart enough to know what's in the new bill, I haven't seen it, but please advertise that as much as you can, because I think there's a lot of stakeholders, there's small developers, large developers, business people, and like I said, I had heard nothing about it, so let's get it all out on everyone's social media, and so everyone can attend, so with that, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else to my right?
Bruce Weber, 428 Bow Street, thank you very much, council members, for an informative, thorough discussion, that's why I love, I don't come here as much as I used to, and don't watch as much as I used to with timing, but it, it's so important to have these, and you know, just to learn about what, what happens, what goes on in the city, and to, on that note, you know, it's obvious that you care, that you're engaged, it's obviously the, I have sat in your seat previously during a crazy financial time in the city, so I'm quite aware of the stresses and the competing agendas that you have to deal with, time, sacrifices that are made, and I've been blessed to be able to be part of an administration on that side too, and understand what goes on behind the scenes, and many people do not see the time that goes into it, the phone calls, the off-hours, because you're always on, and because of that, I think, you know, it's important to realize that there is, you know, time is money, I mean, that's just the truth of it, and especially in the world that we're in now, where time is so valuable, it's very different than it's been even 20 years ago. Frankly, I was in this chamber 20 years ago when former Councilman Dr. Waters proposed the last raise, so it makes me feel old, but I, I would say that I think that, you know, cost of living is very hard to do, it means you have to vote on a raise every year, which can be really particularly challenging, even if it's a small amount of money, so ultimately you have to wait a while till you have these sort of jumps, which in the aggregate can seem a lot, but when you amortize that over time, it's really not that large, and I do think that if you want qualified people to be engaged, to run, to sacrifice, you have to pay them, I mean, I think the school district, frankly, you know, the board of directors should be paid, that's not relevant here, but it's amazing what they do for a completely volunteer, but I think a raise is warranted for, for the mayor, for all the public officials in the city at this time, you know, maybe not the same amount that's being proposed, but, but something. Quickly on the LURDA, challenging issue, big issue, however, speaking to what was raised by I think Councilman Jones about how we get, Rodriguez about how we get revenue, people bring revenue, right, that's work, live, or play, key part of that is going to be how we deal with those empty buildings and fill them with people, and LURDA is going to be a key piece of that, it's going to have to be, so please keep that in mind, it, it just is, the conversion from office to residential is costly, and even more so in Harrisburg versus, say, New York City, which is doing it, or Philly, just because the amount of revenue you can get on a, on a, on a, on a, on a per, you know, square foot basis is lower, but the costs to do it are the same, so keep, keep that in mind. And then the, let's see, the last thing, what was it, oh yeah, the Broad Street Market, you know, obviously also very complicated, where we get revenue, yada, yada, what Ed was saying before about a sinking fund and accountability and transparency, I think one way which you could do that, this requires the, you know, the finance director or the budget director, is create another special revenue fund, such as like the Police Protection Fund, or the, you know, the Parks and Recs Fund, a Broad Street Market Fund, you can pull those revenues and expenditures out of the Capital Projects Fund or the General Fund, I'm not sure frankly where it's at, stick it in that fund, it's all transparent, and you can run the P and L through that, and you can see it, it also allows for transparency in lots of ways, that's just my suggestion, it would take a little reword to do that, I mean, of the budget documents, but nothing really complicated or unusual, so, any, what's that? Yeah, been there, done that, all right, thank you very much.
Sorry, is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing, hearing no one, anyone in the middle section?
Good evening, Council, Libby Profit, Profit from the Experience Incorporated, business consultant. LURDA, application is tied to building permits, I have an issue with that, because permitted, permits and planning is gatekeep by one individual, Mr. Jeffrey Knight, and if he doesn't approve it, it goes nowhere, so I have a problem with a lot of these benefits that are good for our community tied to a particular thing, but it's written in, that's how it is, that's how it is, but with that, I have a question now, if Mr. Knight dropped dead, what happens to the city? If he gateskeep all of these development, and only the big businesses out of town gets these benefits, what happens to the city if something happens to this great man that... If something happens to this great man that gatekeeps? Now with the Broad Street Market, the tent, the lot, the heating, lease for a dollar?